I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda, we have the superintendent's report, recognition of Brandon STEM Bridge Building Competition.
Okay, I'm super excited to be inviting Pauline Mallow, our teacher leader for the STEM program. She's our STEM principal, kind of, right? And for those of you that don't know our STEM program, it is an absolutely amazing program that started in 2009. Teacher design, teachers have put their heart and soul into this over the years. And it's really one of the best programs that I've seen in any school that I've worked at. It's fabulous, the kids do some absolutely amazing things. It's an integrated approach to science, technology, engineering, and math. And I'm gonna shut up and I'm gonna let Pauline talk to us about some of the amazing things these amazing people are doing.
Alright, well, thank you. We have Maddie, Paige, and Riley here, and they wrote a 42-page proposal just to qualify to go to both states and nationals. For nationals, it is across the whole US, and they were one of six teams selected in the ninth and 10th grade category. They worked very hard, they have three different sports schedules amongst the teams, plus their own personal schedules. So we were at school sometimes at 6 o'clock, we left Friday at 8:30 the weekend before competition, and went to Utah where our ladies tested their bridge and presented their presentation to a group of judges. Their bridge held 230 pounds, and it weighed in at 32 grams, 32 grams, so it's a ratio. And they took second place, and we are very proud of all of them. They can show you where their bridge broke. We have a special box because you have to get it on the airplane, and it has to fit in overhead. So this tiny little bridge here
Oh my god.
Actually held 230 pounds before it snapped, it actually broke on the abdutress here, and then it was downhill from there.
Very good.
You can actually watch the video of theirs being tested for the weight category online through, on the homepage for Brandon High School.
I have to say, I watched the video, and it was funny because after a while, I wasn't looking at the bridge, I was looking at you guys in the background. Just like, as more and more was going, it was fantastic, it was wonderful.
So they did a lot of work, though.
And this is three years in a row that we've had teams?
Yes, three years in a row going to nationals. Our first year, we went, we didn't even know what we were doing. It was so fun, and we took third place, and then last year, we took fourth place, and this year, second place. But the biggest thing is that it's the first time we've ever had a bridge in 10 years hold over 200 pounds. It is our 10-year anniversary of the STEM program. It was started in 2009, that was the first school year that they ran the program. Our 11th graders do a promo video, and one of our group of boys did one for the 10th anniversary that I'd like to show you now. The ladies are fresh, yes.
Challenging students.
I'm able to push them a little bit further and really challenge them and make them think.
Everything that they didn't teach in a classroom is what we wanted to cover.
Well, there are a lot of classes where you can just make anything you want through small group meeting. The bridges, tomorrow we're finishing one where we're building houses.
So that's always bigger than just a small group of students getting into cool stuff. It was more to find a way to spread this to every student, right, as much as we could.
It all started in room 146. And how are we all three, what class are we doing now, or how are we doing this? Yeah, we're sitting there, remember, like, sitting on the desk, and speed and put things up here, and we look at spreadsheets.
Because we fought the battle of, like, having all the best kids, right, versus having motivated kids.
Kids really go above and beyond. If it gets something that touches what their kind of niches, they go, and they get real creative in what they're gonna do.
There is multitudes of projects that STEM students partake in over the course of their STEM career. Some highlights include electrical house, public cubes, microbial fuel cells, digital microscopes, rockets, vex robotics, mousetrap cars, cockroaches, and even a STEM promotional video.
My favorite STEM project was the e-metro.
My favorite STEM project was the rocket fuel rocket. My favorite project in STEM was the first project.
Senior STEM students take the STEM apps from class. In this class, students choose a project about anything that interests them, and then they build that project throughout the semester. One of the projects that best highlights the creativity of STEM students is the 3D Design Lab that students do. Students utilize Fusion 360 to model in 3D space anything and everything that interests them, and then they're able to bring that to life using one of the many 3D printers available in STEM lab.
We all say we try to be relevant to what's going on with, like, additive manufacturing and 3D printers and things like that, trying to stay in touch with what's going on.
This, however, is nothing compared to the freshmen's bridge competition. Students compete in a statewide competition to build a bridge out of balsa wood and glue and make it hold as much weight as possible. Teams begin by designing the bridge, and then creating a working drawing, building their bridge, and finally writing an extensive design proposal. If they're accepted, teams travel to Grand Rapids to compete with other teams in the state.
In STEM, it provides an opportunity for that hands-on learning. You're now applying it to real-life situations as if you were an engineer building a bridge.
Bridges, we did our first year, remember, we took three teams. And we only had one team, no, two teams, two teams made it.
So it's grown significantly now where you can finish the national level.
Brandon has even had a few teams accept to national bridge competition, which has been held anywhere from Maine to Tennessee to Utah. Beyond learning so much about the engineering world, STEM students develop a bond unlike anything outside of the program. After spending four years together, students end up becoming a sort of family, one that helps each other out, not only with school, but often with other problems as well.
STEM is, for me, is family, like, we're a big group of, like, we all care about each other, we all want to know what everybody's doing.
The Brandon STEM Athletes Academy is also meant to prepare you for a wide variety of career opportunities in STEM fields.
STEM is so important in our society today. When you look at the careers that are out there, the things that we're supposed to be preparing kids for, we have to start with science, technology, engineering, and math.
When you leave Brandon, you're employable, you've done a presentation before, you've talked to engineers, and actually, I have a sense into the company.
If I was to go back and look at our top kids that graduated from Brandon High School, I know for a fact that many of those kids have been in robotics and STEM.
The Brandon STEM Athletes Academy provides an educational experience unlike any other. It is undoubtedly a life-changing opportunity for all that are involved. How will STEM shape your future?
Very good.
Going into our 11th year, we will have over 217 students next year. That number grew by one more yesterday. So we do get, through a large percentage of our students, through the STEM program, and we do focus on all of the STEM criteria, but we also teach them the soft skills that they will need in the business world. So we know that they're all not going to be engineers, but they will be leaders somewhere in their career. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our favorite progress, I can see both my kids were STEM, and I think a couple on the board have been, but it's just, the family does describe it too. Those kids all get along, and they want each other to succeed. So congratulations on a great program, 10 years and many more years.
Well, thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everything that you do for kids, so appreciate it.
I just want to highlight that, I think all of our staff work so hard in their areas of interest and adding value. But having experienced, through my family, you know, allowing my 14-year-old, you know, and knowing the communication and the good fans and the things that she talks about, to this day, it will stick with her forever. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have introduction of new teachers.
So I'm very excited about this, as we've talked about in our work session, we talked about some of the numbers that we're having in preschool, and how that's started to grow. We've had our kindergarten numbers have decreased in the district for five straight years, and we're right on track, perhaps have our highest year again this year. As we do this, super excited, because now we're adding new staff to elementary, as we're rebuilding our foundation as a district. And we have three that are going to be our next generation, I'm super excited. Dr. Dave, is whatever he's calling him, Dr. Schmido and I, we had a chance to meet with them, we're extremely excited about what they're going to bring. So I'm gonna turn it over to their principals, let them come up and talk about them. They did a great job of selecting some outstanding candidates.
We really did, we really, really did. It was a great process. Yeah, so we started with the end in mind as to when we wanted to have the process done, and then we worked backwards and really found some amazing candidates. So it was really nice being able to hire early on, because we could really get what we can start to be the cream of the crop. So we had a lot of really great candidates to interview, we started some screenings, and we went to a deeper interview. And then the third interview involved them teaching some of our students. So we flew to action, interacting with our kids, planning lost ends, and just see what they can bring to the table. And the top three actually accepted our request to come and be employed here, and we were happy, happy, happy to introducing them today. So at Oakwood, I got to select and hire one brand-new kindergarten teacher. And we have selected and hired as our first-round pick at Oakwood, Rosemary Di Ambrosio. She did her undergraduate work at Central Michigan University and just finished her student teaching. So Rosemary, you can stand up, say, no, can you learn? This is Rosemary, and she'll be at Oakwood. She's already been involved because she came to our Kindergarten Signing Day event, and so she met some of her students and parents already, and is already a part of our staff, so this is Rosemary.
Come on up, Rosemary, tell a little bit about yourself, where you came from.
Alright, so I'm originally from the Lake Orion Park scenario, and that's where I did my STEM teaching. And just within the past week, like I was mentioning, I was able to attend the Kindergarten Signing Day, which I was so excited about. I met so much of the staff, the families, the students, and everyone seemed really on board for a great year of learning and teaching. So I'm really excited to be a Brandon STEM student.
Oh, great, welcome aboard, thank you.
So at Harvey Swanson, we have four kindergarten sections next year, so that's awesome. So we hired Emily Duffy as our new kindergarten teacher. And then we have four current sections of kindergarten, so we're gonna be for first grade. So we brought on Lauren Mitten as our first-grade teacher. Both Lauren and Emily went to OU, they were in the same cohort, and they happened to know each other, which we didn't find out until recently, so that's awesome. And they too have already been up to the school, visited teachers, visited classrooms, and just starting to really become part of the culture of Harvey Swanson. So we're super excited to have them, and Lauren and Emily, come on up and just tell a little bit about yourselves, that'd be great.
So again, I'm Lauren Mitten, I'll be a first-grade teacher at Harvey Swanson. Like you said, I graduated from OU, my endorsements are in Integrated Science and English Language Arts. So I'm really, really passionate, especially about teaching science, so I'm really excited to bring that into the classroom. And I'm just really excited to join in the Brandon team and get started on this new year.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Emily Duffy, I'm thrilled to be here. I also graduated from OU, and I got to visit some of the great kindergarten classrooms and their teachers. And I got my endorsement in Integrated Science as well. I love nature, and I'm looking forward to bringing that into the classroom this upcoming year.
And welcome home with you.
Thank you.
So if you see, just one thing to note is, we had four kindergarten last year. We added a kindergarten teacher, now we added a first-grade teacher. Next year, we're gonna be coming back and introducing a second-grade teacher, another third grade. And kind of see how we're building, and we're building our numbers back from the ground up at Harvey. So really excited about this, it's gonna be that next generation. They're gonna learn from incredible teachers that have a lot of experience, but they all have the strength to be bringing new ideas, be part of adding, adding to that school. And so I'm very excited about this, these hires, so thank you, Miss, for doing this.
Okay, next, on our agenda, end of the year athletic report, Chris?
Thank you, first of all, congratulations and welcome to our new teachers, if you're interested in any coaching opportunity.
Next year.
Next year. So just a quick recap of our spring season. If you looked outside at all during the spring, it was not a fun weather season for our spring athletes. Our normal 12-week season turned into about six and a half, and even when they got to play games, sometimes they were shortened due to the weather. But overall, our spring teams were very competitive, we saw a lot of improvement and progress throughout the season. One of our athletes who is here tonight, who has had an outstanding career in high school athletics, I would like to introduce her, Trisha Pierce. Trisha just completed her senior track season as a Division II state champion in the pole vault. Trisha's final vaulting height that she cleared was 12 foot 6 inches, taking first place, so, yeah, that's pretty high in the air above this ceiling. During Trisha's high school career, she earned Metro League All-League status all four years. Also all four years, she was a state placer, she placed fifth her freshman and sophomore year. She placed second as a junior, and then, of course, this year is her state champion as she finishes her career. Next year, Trisha plans to attend the University of Liverock, Arkansas, to continue pole vaulting. And she also plans to study biology in pre-dental, in the pre-dental program while vaulting for the Trojan. So congratulations, Trisha. And I'm sure Trisha owes a lot of it to her family, she comes from a line of pole vaulters. Her older sister actually holds our pole vaulting record here at Brandon, and her older brother Steve has been our pole vaulting coach last seven years?
Seven years.
Yeah, seven years, so we thank Steve for all his input and tutelage. Thanks, Steve. Couple other things to note about our spring season. We had 43 scholar athletes that met the minimum, or I'm sorry, the 3.5 GPA cumulative for the season. And 11 of those 43 athletes were also All-League recognition, so they're in All-League. I did a quick, before tonight's meeting, I did a quick recap for the season. We had roughly 30% of our athletes this year were scholar athletes. And I did a breakdown of our athletes' GPA versus our regular student body GPA. And in every grade level, our athletes had a higher GPA than the regular student body. And in most cases, it was about a quarter percent higher, so 0.25 or higher compared to the general population. For those of you out there, that's the difference between a B- and a C+ as far as grades go. So athletes have continued to outperform our regular student body in academics as well as in the classroom. Also, I looked at our participation numbers, percentages compared to last year. We did not, well, our percentage is the same, last year we had 43% participation, this year we had 43% participation. When you think about that overall, our enrollment declined, so really our participation went up, if you look at it that way. So we'll continue to, obviously, with our programs, promote athletics and try and get people, our students, involved in participating, and hopefully that number gets closer to 50%, at least that's our goal in the coming years. Moving into summer, you've seen our brochure, the brochure, our athletic summer camps are in that brochure. Student athletes can sign up online through the athletic website, through the Community Ed website. Yep, they can contact the Community Ed office directly. I looked at the calendar, our athletes have eight weeks of summer, because on August 12th, they're back for fall sports. So they have 56 days from today before they're back for fall sports. Which means, just a quick preview, Fall Meet the Blackhawks Night will be Wednesday, tentatively right now, it's scheduled for Wednesday, August 21st at 7:00 PM, in Black Hawk Stadium, that's where we'll introduce all our fall teams, it's a free event, kind of kick off the fall season. And then our first home varsity football game will be September 20th, it's a little bit late this year, the first three games are on the road. But that will be our salute to service and first responder game. So it's against Owasso, when we played Owasso at their place, they did a salute to service trophy that we said we would be part of each year, so it will rotate back and forth. We added the first responder piece to it, since we started that last year, we're just gonna add that onto the trophy, so it'll be a salute to service and first responder trophy. So that's it, any questions for me?
I don't have any questions.
Good job.
Yeah, great job, good job, thanks, congratulations. Okay, next, public comments and questions on Agenda Business. I have two people, Bonnie Kirin. You want to talk from there again?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm disappointed that you did not get my letter, because I did a lot of research to help you, but, that aside, I hope that you can get me the contact information for them, or whoever is your site director here, because I know Matt mentioned that, you know, in-house you would take care of the sign-ups for Silver Sneakers, but that's something that all of the people at the pool are quite interested in. You know, it might mean they change insurance companies to be able to have that accommodation. But the information that Silver Sneakers gave me was that, you know, if they had a Silver Sneaker addendum on their insurance policy, on their supplemental as seniors, then they would pay the annual fee, which would give you more people using the pool on an annual basis. That can't hurt your numbers, and I think we need to look into that. And it could be a big plus for people in the community who have teetered back and forth, even if they used it once a week as part of their exercise program or rehabilitation. Because when I was at the pool, several people came over to me and told me their stories about how that pool was their rehabilitation. And that's a very big plus for a community pool, to have community members able to access that service in their community. Since they're paying for it, hook them up.
Thank you, Bonnie Kirin, and then I have Chris Cordella. Chris, you want to come, Chris, we're gonna have you, Chris, we're gonna have you come on up so we can hear you.
Pretty deep voice, but okay.
You gotta get our camera too.
I'm Chris Cordella, I'm 1575 Hunter Road. Looking, I'm a little confused, only because I'm a trustee, and looking at the agenda, I did not flip it over to see that I have a chance to talk at the end of this meeting?
There's citizens input, this is on agenda items only.
Right, okay, very good.
Is there something on the agenda?
I will wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'll hold on to this, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a motion, if I could, if you have it please, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes, yes, opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, our information and discussion items, Board of Education Committee reports. Melissa, do we have one from the Evaluation Committee?
Evaluation Committee met earlier this week, I'm sorry, yeah, earlier this week, last week, thank you, thank you as well. And so we are on track as far as with the superintendent evaluation, and we have a timeline that we'll be adhering to to evaluate.
In fact, it'll be an action item, because we had one and we're just adjusting it.
Great, we have an amendment that we're going to be doing that we discovered, now that we have to be taking care of, so that'll be something that'll be addressed, and then we'll be moving forward with our scheduled timeline.
Okay, anyone else have, no other committee reports? Okay, Dan, you're up, the finance report.
Okay, again, tonight is our mandatory public budget hearing, which completes the troop and taxation hearing. I'm going to start with the, we're gonna be discussing the troop and taxation hearing of the mills, and then I will be going through the general fund, it's a 5:30 meeting, for those that weren't here, we did discuss the special revenue accounts. I wanted to start with our property tax levy. We levy a non-homestead tax of 17.8706 mil. The state maximum is 18 mil. The district had a permanent heavily rollback a few years ago, so we're just slightly under the state maximum of 18 mils. Currently, for 2019 levy, starts July 1, our non-homestead property value here in Brandon, close Brandon, Ortonville, and building Hattie Township, is 146 million, oh six nine, $594. An increase, a severe slight increase of 43,000, almost flat from last year, 43,134. Regarding the debt levy, the debt levy is going to remain the same at 12.16 mils, and the debt levy is levied on all property. The taxable value of all property did increase quite a bit, well, I guess 1.07%. The debt current value for 2019, 645 million, 343,358, or an increase of a little over 44 million, 1.07%. I did want to, real quick, I couldn't get this into my PowerPoint, but in the L49, 49, is in this packet, and I just, real quick, for, I wanted to just explain the 12.16 mils. I get questions on this, so I thought it might be good to let you know that that is based on, it's on the first page. There, we have three separate levies here, the 2015 refunding, and what that is, is that's the school bond loan fund that we refunded back in 2015, saving several million dollars, we were able to get a lower interest rate. The 2016 debt, the next line, is the 2006 voted bond. We refunded that as well in 2016 at a lower interest rate, so it has a new name, 2016. And then the 2018 debt actually is the 1996 voted bond. It was refunded once in 2008, and then again, we refunded in 2018, again, for the same reason, to save taxpayer money. And if you go across on that page, you'll see that each one of these levies has a different amount associated with it. Just wanted to kind of draw your attention to the detail of what makes up that 12.16 mils here in the community. Any questions on that before I go into the general fund budget? So Matt and I start, like, back in November, for the current year, for the next year budget, we start, we have numbers, and we start looking at things that we always know we're probably going to have to make some reductions, expenditure reductions, because we are losing students. So this part here, the general fund budget assumptions, so these are what we use to assume to create the, to create next year's budget. We are looking at, we used a $200 student increase, we think that that's fair, based on all of the information coming from Lansing, and what the Senate, the Governor, and the House proposed, we think $200 is a fair number to use, we're hoping it's actually more. Based on the projections on students, we are, we used an 80-student decline. Again, we're hoping that we beat that, but as you all know, there's a lot of competition out there. Several school districts, Plaqueson just opened this year, and it had never been open before, but, as of now, I don't think we've lost any kids, that's good news. And our kindergarten enrollment is looking good. So 80 students, that's a lot, and it's better than we've been, it's the first time we're projecting under 100 students left, so that's good news. We are set to receive an increase from the county for our specialized funding, that's the County Village, P A 18 is what it's called, about 118,000, so that's good news, because we've been getting a reduction every year, so this is the first year we've seen a nice increase like that. I use no change in categorical funding, although 31A is a categorical, and we do anticipate getting more money. getting more money, but that was not sure enough to actually put into the budget. But we do hope to get some more money on 31A money. This year, we have had a big specialized cost adjustment. I don't expect that next year, so there's no adjustment in the budget. Slight increase in operating tax, 39,000. But as you know, the state or per pupil is offset by the amount of money we collect locally. So it doesn't really give us any more bottom line. As far as expenditures go, this budget contains, or contains, it has a line item for our capital outlay and our maintenance department of 150,000. We spent a little bit less than that this year. And with our, we have our separate building fund, the sale of Beland and the sale of Fletcher gave us a little, a separate capital projects fund. So if that were to go above 150, the reason we reduce is we have the extra money from the sale of those buildings if we were to need a big project. We have been keeping that at about 300,000 the last two years, but we were able to reduce that. Technology, next year, have 40,000 in there. We spent 105,000 this year. We had a big project, as you all know, the big infrastructure project that Thomas did. We're not looking at anything that big next year, 40,000's in there. We are committed to building security, the police liaison and then the premier, we have a security guard at every building, about 225,000 there for full-time security in the district. As we've done in the past year or last year, and I think maybe two years ago, the budget, we build in a line item for, we just call it negotiations. So there's no certainty what that's going to look like, but we'd like to build it into the budget. And again, this year, we've built in 400,000. Curriculum, we have a budget right now, 274,000. That includes all of our online classes, our 22,000 for NWEA, textbooks are just everything to do with curriculum, 274,000. And then we have a transfer in, in this budget, 65,000 that I talked about in the last meeting. And then the new this year, we have, discussed a little bit more in a couple minutes, the transfer out, that's the operating surplus, we're going to transfer into a newly created debt service account that will make the payments on the energy bond and the installment purchase agreement. So right now, projecting about 657,000. Of course, once the off go, we'll have a exact number there. Additional numbers here, as far as our instructional staff, we're looking at a net reduction of 4.4 MTE, most of it is retirements. People support, the district is adding a full-time social worker. It's an investment we're making. Administrative reductions, we have one administrative reduction, we have teaching next year. Medical costs increase of about $60,000. Our retirement rate, which surprised me, is going up to 27.5%. That's the biggest increase we've had in a while. So that means for every dollar of salary that we pay, we have to pay 27 cents, 27 cents, 27 and a half cents, which is a lot, that's huge. Our utility cost reduction, I built in 150,000. That's due to our LED conversion, which Oakwood has done and he'll be, the company will be starting Harvey and then middle school and high school. So we were told we're going to see a big reduction there. Now, some of that may be offset, actually had a little bit higher reduction, but we're putting air conditioning in Harvey and everywhere in the high school. So with air conditioning at the top, we're going to save a little bit of an offset on the savings. But we were told, I believe, 150,000 is a good number. Some more numbers, our Aqua Club contract savings next year, 54,400 that we talked about earlier. Year two contract savings, 56,000. The board voted four months ago to give the custodians a raise with a new contract that will cost about $53,000. Our first student contract, we have a two-year contract, the second year was set for 2.5% increase, so that's roughly $24,000. And the bus maintenance costs, we spent 45,000 this year. The contract said that we were responsible for all bus maintenance costs until every bus passed police inspection. So all the buses are good, the police inspection was last week and I'm waiting on the report, but I'm assuming that we will be off the hook for any bus maintenance cost now for student heads or student act. So that's 45,000 that we'll save next year. These numbers are small, I apologize to the audience. Y'all have the report. As far as revenue goes, I just broke it down into categories. We have our operating knowledge, which is, we just talked about. We have athletic revenue, which consists of pay to participate and gate receipts, about 102,000 there. We have money for art, all of our money comes from the state, our per pupil foundation allowance. And we have federal grant revenue. And as always, the federal grant revenue, I have a corresponding expenditure, so the net is zero. We have our money from the county, our PA-18 money, we, million three, and some Medicaid reimbursements from Oakland schools. And then our miscellaneous transfers, that category. So we're looking at revenue, I'm going to open my page, it's really small, it's like 25,874, yep, 25 million. And this year, 25,854,879. Next year, the proposed budget would be a decrease of almost a half, 500,000. So next year, we're looking at revenue of 25,379,215, with a bulk of the reduction from the state. Any questions on revenue? Okay, move on to expenditures. And what I do with expenditures, I do this always, I show expenditures two different ways. The first way is by function, function meaning the district, what we do. So that's broken up with instruction, instructional support, general business, operations maintenance, transportation, central services, that would include on technology, human resources, then our athletics and our student activities, our debt service, that's the bulk of the debt services, 19, we have 19 buses that we're making payments on. And then payments to other schools, that category would be our center programs. We send kids to other schools and we charge that to start service and then the operating transfers out. As you can see, the relatively stable, reduced, a little bit in instruction, yes, we have less teachers, but we built in the negotiations, negotiations line item. So that's why the decrease wasn't as much as it might have otherwise been. The operating transfers out account is again, what we're sending to the debt service. So expenditures, looking at it this way and the next way, you'll see what we're projecting is expenditures to equal revenue so that the operating surplus, there would not be a surplus. One last way to look at the expenditures, this may be, I think both of these ways are beneficial, just ways to look at how the district is spending our money. This would be, okay? We have salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, utilities, capital outlay and other transfers out. We're seeing a decrease for next year in every single category. Again, it has to do with less staff, it has to do with, we're saving money on utilities because of the LED project. And the proposed budget next year would be that we would spend 25,379,215. The transfer out next year is a little bit less in 1920 than this year, that just because we are operating surplus, I expect to be a little bit less. Okay, I want to do our, I need that page made quick, our fund balance analysis. We always talk about fund balance. At the end of this year, we're looking at a surplus of about 657,518, the number I keep talking about, that's our transfer number. Next year, a little bit less, about 418,380. Again, if the state gives us 250 for an increase, that number will go up, assuming our student reduction doesn't decrease by more than 80. Our fund balance, we have a healthy fund balance. We're projected to end, once again, at 4,124,117, or 15.99%. 1920 to end the same fund balance. And the reason that percentage goes up is fund balance is a total divided by revenue. So as our revenue decreases, the percentage increases on the fund balance. So at 16%, that's a solid fund balance. The board has chosen to assign $2 million in fund balance, I think we did that about three years ago. And that's our project rainy day fund because we don't have, we do not have any, we do not have early funds, sinking fund, we don't have any ways to pay for infrastructure and buildings and the big project type thing. So we take that 2 million out, our unassigned fund balance would be 2.1 million, both years, and a little over 8%, which is still a good number. Any questions so far?
The point I had, Jan, was when you had a couple pages ago, you showed debt service on one line, then we have the operating transfers out. What's the first debt service?
That is our, most of that is our bus payments. We purchased 15 buses in 1314 and then two in 1516 and two more. So currently, we have 19 buses that we're paying off. The good news is last year is our last year for the first batch, so that's the 203,000 we paid, that's going to drop off. And the goal is to perhaps be able to run those buses for maybe three more years after we pay them off. So it'll be a savings for the district for those three years.
Thank you.
Yep, debt service. We have a little bit on copiers, but most of it is.
Yeah, I see, that's a big chunk.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's, the rest of it was just getting into what I talked about at the 5:30 meeting, our special revenue fund. Any questions? All right, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jan, thank you.
Thanks, Jan, great job.
Okay, next, we have our education report, Dr. Dave.
Thank you. All right, well, ready to get me set up, I'm going to come on camera. My wife might be watching tonight for some crazy reason, so happy 19th anniversary. Okay. I'm just rounding points in. Education report for today. I'm going to start off by just telling a quick story, quick analogies, I've shared these with our principals a few times as well. Data has become a four-letter word in education lately. We talk about assessment constantly and sometimes we lose sight of the relationships and the things that we say really, really matter. So when we're talking about data today, I really want to focus on the idea of growth because that's what, that's what it's all about, taking every single kid wherever they are and moving them forward. And two quick examples of this that are somewhat related. I told the principals about a friend of mine who, his name is Patrick. Patrick's a friend of mine who lives down in Florida still. Just a couple of weeks ago, Patrick posted an update on his Instagram of himself standing on a scale. And if you look down, the scale says that Patrick weighs 328 pounds. Some people, when they would see that, would look at it and say, whoa, Patrick's not healthy. Unfortunately, what that picture doesn't show is where Patrick was a year ago. A year ago, Patrick weighed close to 550 pounds. When you see the entire story, you see the progress Patrick has made. Similarly, I gave the example of myself and I'll say this stuff publicly, it's okay. I weigh 170 pounds. I run between 50 and 60 miles a week. I've got a resting heart rate of about 65. Most people would say, whoa, you're pretty healthy. But I'm going to tell you, I'm 41 years old. My dad had his first heart attack at 42. My grandfather, on his side, had his first heart attack at 44. You might say, ooh, the numbers don't tell you everything, you need to go dig a little bit deeper. I tell you all that because I'm going to be showing some numbers today. And the numbers don't tell the whole story. It's a snapshot, but it gives us something that we can dig a little deeper. So when you know my history, I know what questions to ask my doctor and what I need to go examine a little bit further, it's the same thing here. I'm going to show you some numbers, nowhere near like what Jan just showed you, but you're still going to see some numbers, so she warms you up just a little bit. So you have a copy of this in front of you, I'm going to walk you through and just try to teach you about this quadrant graph, which I think is super, super cool and super helpful for us. So what we're going to be looking at is we're going to be looking at NWEA scores. We use NWEA scores because they are the scores that we have with the most frequency throughout our district. Literally from kindergarten up through the middle of high school, kids are taking an NWEA test, twice, three times a year, depending on when a kid moves in. We're able to really measure progress in a consistent way for each kid. So on the NWEA test, what you're going to be seeing in a second, is you're going to be seeing numbers scattered around what I call the quadrant chart, because on the chart we've got four quadrants. Ideally, we're going to see lots and lots of kids up in that upper right-hand quadrant. Up in this upper right-hand quadrant, we have kids that have high achievements and high growth. So if you're a kid who scores at a 100 percent, so gee, gee, outscored everybody else, and yet you still continue to grow, we didn't just take you and say, okay, you're already there, so we're just going to leave you there. But if you are a high scorer and you continue to grow, you'll have, you'll be represented up in the upper right-hand quadrant. I have a number one on here because that's the best quadrant to be in. If we're doing what we're tasked to do, we'll have a lot of kids up at number one. The second best quadrant, my subjective rankings, is over here in the top left, the orangish color. This is high growth, low achievement. High growth at times is more important than high achievement because a kid might have started off really, really low and they're not there yet, but we're doing our job and we're moving them. So top right, then top left. Okay, so we want to have a lot of kids up at the top of this graph, in the quadrant. Then you move down to the bottom, the bottom right, which is that yellowish area, which is where you have high achievement and low growth. So a kid might have come in at the beginning of the year really, really high, but we didn't move them. We don't want kids to be in that quadrant, but at least they started off high. Somebody somewhere did something for them. What we want to try to avoid is the bottom left, low achievement and low growth. Okay? So what, just a break, on the left-hand side, it says conditional growth percentile 50. So to be above the line, which means you have to have been growing better than 50% of the other kids. So outperforming the norm, if you will. That's kind of the break in, 50th on both sides. Does that set the stage?
Nope.
Okay. So this is where your packet might come in handy or look at the screen closest to you. So what I'm starting off with is our district overall average, and you'll see, I'll go pretty quickly and I'll start drilling down by building, because there's a lot that we can do with this information. The first thing that stands out to me when we look at the district overall, in the top right-hand corner, which is where I go, that's where we want to be, I start there, I love the fact that we have well more than 25% of our kids in both reading and math in that top right quadrant. Remember it's quadrant, so in a perfect world, 25, 25, 25. You can see in reading, as a district, we have 39% of our kids, high achievers and high growth. That's impressive. You look at math, it's almost identical, 38% high achievers and high growth, which is awesome. Which means we're taking kids that come to us high and we're not saying, okay, you're already here, we're stagnating you. We're continuing to move those kids, which is outstanding. And you can see that second best quadrant to be in, to the left. And you can see the numbers change a little bit. And you're going to notice that the pattern that we're going to be talking about as we go, okay? They're not nearly as high as the upper right. However, if you take the entire top, which is high growth, divided by the bottom, we have a ratio, we call it a high growth versus low growth ratio, because basically you're seeing what's the percentage of kids that are still growing? You want to be at least at a one. A one would mean you have the same number of kids growing as you do not growing. So if you're at a one, you're maintaining. In both reading and math, you can see at the very bottom there, we are, we're growing, we are outperforming the national norm. Which means our kids across the district are outpacing, basically playing leapfrog over other kids in other places, which is awesome, awesome news. You can see in reading, we have a ratio of 1.22, and in math, we're at 1.02. So this page is kind of that reference page for you. Okay? All right. We'll jump into Oakwood, and yay, poised still here, because this is where kids are really, really, really fun. Take a look at this page in the upper right-hand quadrant. I'll just let that resonate for a second. 42%. That is awesome. You take that, if you take the totals for the entire top line, 61% of the kids are growing faster than the national norm at Oakwood. Remember, the expectation is that all kids are going to grow, all kids sitting in class are going to grow. But 61% of the kids at Oakwood are growing faster than the rest of the country. So lots of leapfrog. So lots of leapfrog kids, and that's in math. Take a look at reading, which is also super fun to see. It's almost a mirror image. Again, right, sixty-two percent, which is exciting. One of the things that I'm tasked to do is, I'm tasked, I told you this is one of my first meetings, is to look at curriculum. I'm also, I'm supposed to be looking at programming, and I'm looking at pedagogy. Pedagogy is the teacher moves that take place. With this chart, we can actually look at some of those teacher moves. We can see if there are differences within grade levels, and we can actually break this down by individual teachers. We can see if it's a curriculum issue, if we're seeing consistent patterns, and we can really try to pinpoint what our next steps are and what our next questions are. Again, I'm just going to go back just so you can see the ratios here. The ratio for math was one point five-eight, one point six-four for reading. That's powerful, powerful stuff. Again, we have the same information, Harvey Swanson, you can see where we are. What's exciting about Harvey Swanson, again, that upper right-hand quadrant, is where most of their students are. Thirty-six percent in math are in the upper right-hand quadrant. Take a look at that upper left-hand quadrant, though. Again, this is those areas that I noticed it. And I'll just, I'll take a little dance down this road. That upper left-hand quadrant, in a lot of districts, when you're comparing, is a place where you see a lot of movement taking place. You see bigger numbers there. If you think about what happened traditionally, we have kids that are low achievers at the beginning of the year. These are kids that we tend to have a lot of interventions in play for. They might be part of a process, a formalized process, they might have more supports, and it's a place that we can, we have an opportunity to really maximize and see a lot more growth in the future. We've had a lot of conversations throughout the year about really progress, monitoring what we're doing, making sure that the interventions we have in place for kids are really bringing forth the results that we want to see. So when we see something like this, we can say, okay, that's an area for us to really focus in on in the future. Again, in the reading, you can see where we are, again, thirty-five percent in that upper right, but we have thirty-seven percent in the bottom left. The middle school, looking at middle school math, I'm just going to start showing you these now that you understand the pattern, and ask your own questions, have your own thoughts. And then I'm on reading. The high school. And high school reading. So all of that stuff gives you a snapshot, so you can have some questions, or I can sit down and have some conversations with administrators or grade level teams. We can interject ourselves in those little student data meetings that we've talked about as well, and just have some of these conversations. They start with, that starts by helping us focus our questions and where we need to ask the questions. This one, intentionally, I've blurred out a lot of information. I don't want you necessarily to see this information, I just wanted to show you some of the information we have. On this spreadsheet, we actually have this area that's included on both of these, teacher names, because we're going to drill this down to individual teachers as well. We can say, where do we see the most success happening from individual teachers, that we can then take and maximize that and duplicate those results. We have some teachers, for example, that, remember that ratio I was talking about, at six point six 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 seven. So six times as many kids with high growth compared to low growth. So those are teachers we tap into and say, what are you doing? I've actually had those meetings, I've sat down and said, give me the secret sauce, and we're going to try to pour that into some of these other classes, which is awesome. Again, we've got others that are threes and fours, and then, again, we do have some that are on the other end of that, where we can then provide some targeted support and targeted interventions, just like we do for kids. We need to do the same thing in our classrooms for all of us to continue to grow. And again, this is just some research, and you've seen this chart before, I shared it with you. We can really target our strategies and our interventions and make sure that we're focusing on the things that work. And this is just what the research tells us works, you need to stay away from the stuff with the red arrows and really focus on the stuff with the green arrows. And we have these conversations with our teachers and make sure that the moves that we're making in our classrooms are the moves that best maximize success for kids. And what's cool is when I talk to some of these teachers in buildings like at Oakwood, or these teachers that have six point six six seven, those green arrows are the things that they're doing, that the research supports, but we're also seeing it happen in classrooms as well. So that's where we are right now as a district. Remember, this is spring to spring. Data is good, we're trying our best not to be one of those drip districts, drip data-rich, information-poor. If we're collecting the data, let's use it and do something with it. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I like this so much better with the numbers. I feel like I'm seeing some concrete rather than visionary.
Right, good.
And this is, and again, when I first looked at it before the meeting, like, okay, the color helped a lot.
Great.
Mike, this is the first time you've given it to us this way, right?
Yes, yep.
So next year, a year from now, will we see the last-year numbers with this-year numbers?
I'd be happy to get it to you, absolutely.
So we see a.
I can share whatever it is you want to share, we can get it for you, sure. Absolutely.
I like this format quite a bit.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, with being on the board for a bit now, and hearing reports and everybody's best efforts always to present data, this is very helpful to me.
Great, okay. I'll make sure that we keep this then, and year over year, absolutely. Anything else?
To be consistent will be helpful.
Absolutely.
You don't have to re-educate us.
Fair enough.
Anybody else got comment?
How are your teachers responding to this?
The teachers are actually, this is the first year we've really put a big emphasis on spring to spring. And again, I started by saying, data has become a four-letter word. And unfortunately, because so much emphasis has been placed on evaluations, that evaluations have become almost tainted. In some places, evaluations are true feet that, conversations and helping, helping people grow, but in some places, it's, it's still seen as a judgment and a label. So we're trying to break down some of those barriers so people can look at this and say, ooh, what do I need to do differently? Prime example, though, is I just met with a grade level, Friday, Thursday, Friday, over at Oakwood, who invited me to come over just so we could talk through all of this. And they're now reaching out to each other, because they were able to talk through which teacher had which scores, and now they're reaching out to each other, saying, here's our learning opportunities for next year, we're going to come in and we're going to watch your classroom, or you can come help me do some lesson planning, which is exactly what we're hoping for.
Okay, anybody? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, next, we're going to move to our action items. If I could get a motion for, for the approval of employment-certified staff.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to employ the following teachers. Yeah, sorry, teachers for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented. Lauren Minton, Harvey Swanson, Emily Duffy, Harvey Swanson, and Rosemary De Ambrogio, Oakwood.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no, they're hired. Congratulations, welcome aboard. Okay, next, can I get it up? The approval of Oakwood Elementary fifth-grade students' overnight trip to Mackinac City.
I move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakwood fifth-grade students' overnight trip to Mackinac City on May nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand twenty, as presented.
Support. Okay, any discussion? Or did you want to say anything real quick?
Yeah, just the fact that this was our first year doing the trip, and the way that the teachers took a hold of this trip and did some really fine-tuned planning and preparation for things that, I guess, I felt like, how are you going to foresee what you need to do, but somehow they did, and it went really, really smoothly, and it was a great trip for all of our kids. So it was just what we wanted it to be. It was like a culminating activity to kind of wrap up all of the learning that they'd done in social studies and in some science areas, you know, up through the third, fourth, and fifth grade curriculum. And then the better part to me, one of the better parts, was that it was a real relationship builder for a lot of our kids, even though they've been in school with a lot of their peers or most of their peers since kindergarten, new different relationships were formed because moving parents that didn't know each other otherwise, she had to run the trip, got to know each other. Kids that weren't friends before became friends. So going into middle school, they may have a new peer group beginning to develop. So it was just an overall amazing trip for everyone.
I went.
Did you go?
It was fun. And then my other daughters were nice, too.
All right.
But it was really great. I mean, I'm not really somebody to go like, hey, let's go to a fort. And, you know, we went there, and I was like, I want to come back, and it was, and it was lovely, so.
The flies were a problem, but.
A little attack of the.
We're going to get some masks.
It was like, loving coming in, but.
It was bad, but I just didn't think, oh, that you approved for this. I mean, I felt the kids were pretty young, but it was a beautiful trip, so we want to make it a yearly thing, so I hope that year two is the beginning of our annual adventure.
Great idea. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion's passed, you're going to Mackinac Island.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get an approval for the middle school band and choir overnight trip to Mackinac City?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the middle school band and choir overnight trip to Mackinac City, May eighth through ninth, two thousand twenty, as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, another yearly trip, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Adoption of the final two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget.
I move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the final two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Adoption of the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget.
Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. The proposed budget passes. Approval of the two thousand nineteen tax levy.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the two thousand nineteen L forty twenty-nine tax levy as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, levy, tax levy passes. Approval of the Aqua Club contract extension slash amendment.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Aqua Club contract extension slash amendment as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Just discuss the detail after the, at the work session.
Yep.
It's a two-year contract extension to provide great service for kids after the beginning.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. New contract for two more years. Approval of contract food service employees.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the contract for food service employees as presented.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Do you want to mention anything on this?
I talked about five thirty, but yeah, I can just renegotiate with a two percent-plus debt for the food service employees.
Good group, very dedicated group of people.
Yeah, they do a great job, and as I talked earlier, the budget can afford that. And that is a three-year contract, two percent the first year, two percent the second year, and the third year is a wait opener. So it's frozen the third year, but we can discuss.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, contract passes. Approval of Brandon Interbaro proposal.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon Interbaro proposal as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Talked about this in the work session, a very exciting program, pilot program where we're going to be doing intermural sports from second grade through sixth grade, and excited to see that go, get going.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great idea, and I look forward to seeing it really take off, so, good job. Good job for us, too, and thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, Brandon Interbaro passes. Approval of the superintendent evaluation timeline addendum.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the superintendent evaluation timeline addendum as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion?
It's basically, it was initially done for a brand-new superintendent, I've been here five years now, so it's just adjusting a little bit to.
Just to make the timeline.
To fit with our timeline, kind of our normal way of doing it.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, new timeline takes effect. Approval of employment school social worker.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to employ Holly Shigley as the new social worker effective for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion on that, presenting long overdue.
Yeah, no, we talked about this last week. This connects with a whole bunch of different things, from supporting our students, part of our security plan. Diane's done a great job of running Diane's Dan, and I did a great job interviewing candidates, several really strong candidates, and Holly rules from the top, and her best job there.
I'm sorry, she's been here today, she's a.
Mistress.
She's got the lead, so, but she's a great candidate, and we did a two-round interview with several administrators, and part of our mental health group, psychologists and social workers, all part of the team, and she definitely came to the top.
And mostly at the lower schools, correct? Like the elementary?
No, she hasn't been assigned yet, but.
Okay.
She'll be part of the, and the president will help team, so they all work together.
Okay.
And she'll be here on the eighth, she's on a mission trip, her husband is a new pastor at Kensington Church, and so she will be here on the eighth of July to meet for.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, approval of the appointment of our new social worker. Okay, approval of change orders.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the change orders as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion is, they just rolled a couple minor things that we've got to tweak because there's a little more damage or repairs that needed to be done. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, citizens input. Mr. Cordella? And Mr. Cordella, just so you know, we put the rules of protocol here, three minutes.
Yeah.
Of the thing.
I'm expecting, I'm expecting, I like to talk real. Always, always, Julie expected to come to this meeting and getting a bunch of bad news, but I'm happy to say, especially from a financial standpoint, this makes, you're obviously just a great job, and I just want to thank you for that as a resident and as a senior citizen of this community, and as you guys all know, senior citizens that are from the larger street, we're citizens in this township, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank everybody else that's involved in my job, I'm sure you have a great hand in that. So, having said that, I just have an interesting question for Dr. Day. I'm not even going to try and pronounce your last name.
And Mr. Cordella, the other thing is you addressed the board, and we can get you to go.
I just, I just.
Oh, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, I like your charts, and I guess, but it would be helpful when there are disparities between grade levels, like elementary versus middle school versus high school, that there would be like, like maybe some verbiage as to why that might be. For some reason, the numbers between elementary and middle schools to high school varied greatly, and it was hard to understand why, you know? I mean, the percentages in elementary were good, it was over one, so we were overachieving, and, but high school was at point eight, as I, as I saw. The second question is, is why can't we get grades eleven and twelve captured? Because I would think that we want to get those bad data because those kids are going Because I would think that we wanna get that data, because those kids are going to be, you know, graduating and going into the workforce or going off to college, and those numbers are probably the most important, that's probably the most important metric that we can, we can, we can come up with, because those are the kids that are ready to go out in the great wide world, you know. So that's it. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Cordella. Dave, order for Mr. Parks. Mr. Cordella, he's gonna give you some answers.
Absolutely. I was, especially trying to.
Okay, you do that right now?
I can, yeah.
Okay, we're good.
So for the second component, NWEA, which is the assessment, the test that we use, doesn't offer an 11th and 12th grade version. The reason is because it's a nationally-normed test, and across the country, all 50 states have compulsory education from 6th to 16th, and most juniors and seniors are beyond 16, so they decided not to run the assessment there. Plus, you already have SAT and ACT, which you can nationally-norm as well, so.
Okay.
So they take the SAT in 11th grade, that's the big one for those, but.
I understand, what's that?
They take this NWEA test, they take it in 9th, 10th grade, in 11th grade, they're taking the SAT, but there's a linking study, the NWEA, they're linked together, so we do get data out of 11th graders as well.
Okay. And then the other one, great.
Yeah, the other one is a great question, and the fact that you even asked that question is phenomenal, because those are the conversations we have now all summer long. It's one of the reasons we give this assessment three times a year, so we can constantly progress milder, because in our gut instincts, we can, we can sit around on a day-to-day basis and say, everything is going great, but when we see something like this, we can ask more questions. So we're already scheduling meetings to have these open questions answered, and we're actually doing, we're on curriculum review cycle right now, where we're looking at some of these critical areas. Literacy is jumping out at us for next year, science as well, so we're drilling into some of these very specific questions.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the, appreciate the feedback.
Absolutely.